Hi everyone, my name is Mohamed Sidki. I'm the AIA Sumitheer County Chapter President. I want to welcome you all to our October AREE 5.0 study session. We are excited to have Aisha Mura again with us as she will be going over section properties and design of members. Before we start, I'd like to make a few chapter announcements. First, we want to say thank you to our sponsors, our AREE series sponsor Heather Young Architects, our platinum chapter sponsors Da Vinci Marble, Lee &amp; Braith Engineering, our gold chapter sponsors Roman Engineer and MN Builders, and our silver chapter sponsors BKG Structural Engineers. Session rules, please mute yourself to reduce background noise. Feel free to unmute and ask questions at any time. Please feel free to add questions to the chat box below during the presentation. Do not discuss any specific exam questions as not permitted by NCAR and not that this session is being recorded and I will be posting to our YouTube channel. A little bit about our guest speaker. Aisha Mura is an award-winning licensed engineer with DPR Construction. Her background includes building enclosures and structural engineering, and she specializes in facades and prefabricated structures for higher education and healthcare markets. She recently moved from Phoenix where she served in leadership roles with the Structural Engineering Association, Women in Healthcare, and was involved with various other organizations. She's excited to be in Newport Beach and can't wait to be involved with the community here locally and with California as a whole. During the weekends, she loves to host dinner parties and try new restaurants with her husband. Other than eating, she enjoys going hiking with her dog and spending time with her friends and family. Aisha, you want to take it from here?
Alright, looks like we're in business. Okay, so in today's class, we're going to be going over some of like the engineering and analysis and design of using properties or cross-sectional properties. So in our previous classes, we had gone over shear and bending diagrams. We also went over trusses in which there would be axial loads like compression and tension. So the next piece is that now that we know how these loads are applied and what those loads, what those demand loads are, we can move into actually designing each of the members such that you can size a member appropriately to be able to carry those loads. so the first one which all of you guys obviously already know, the first cross-sectional property is the property area. And by definition, it's just the measurement of your overall surface and it's, the units for that is typically in square feet or square inches, or if you're practicing in the UK, then meters, etc. Or wherever else in the world, not necessarily in the UK. And the most common shapes within structures is some kind of combination of a circle, a rectangle or square, or a triangle, and sometimes trapezoidal shapes. And these are some common formulas that would be really good to memorize for the exam. Although when I was looking at the practice questions, it looks like oftentimes they will give you the formula, but if you have these three pretty much memorized, then I think you'll be good to go. The next section property would be a centroid, which is denoted with a C. And the definition is that it is the geometric center of the cross-section. So if we're looking at these visuals for a rectangle or square, it would be half the distance of your height and half of the distance of your width. For triangles, and I think we had gone over this a little bit during our shear and moment diagram classes, is that it would be the third of your height or the third and the third of your width of the base. And then for a circle, obviously since it's a symmetric object, if it's a full circle, then it would be right at the center. But for a semicircle or a quarter circle, then it's given by this formula here. And for a few homework problems, if you guys are feeling a little rusty on how to calculate areas or the centroid, then here's a couple. But for class, we can totally go over this example here together. So for this one, if you're given a problem that is like this, first thing is making sure that your units are the same. So just in case if there is a trick question. And so this is obviously in feet, so and the rest are in inches. So we can go ahead and convert all of these into feet by, and the conversion would be dividing whatever your inches is by 12, since there's 12 inches in a foot. and then, so for finding the centroid, first, we're going to find, we're going to set our x and y axis. We have our x-axis and our y-axis, and we'll have this start at zero. And then we can do this two ways. One would be if we were to take the centroid by cutting each of these shapes like so, so this will be shape 1, 2, 3, and 4. And then getting the average of that. Another could be to get the overall area and then subtracting the negative space. However, I'm going to go over the first one here and then I might, I don't actually recall how to do it with going backwards, but I will come back to that later. So for this rectangle here, we know that it's going to act in the center here. And since this whole shape is symmetric, really the center is somewhere here. And so we know that this centroid is going to be at, so this is 12 feet. You know that this is 2 and 4, so then this distance here is 6 feet. So then from along the y-axis, it's going to be 3 foot. Going to be 3 feet. And then because this acts at the center of this symmetric shape, we know that this is going to be 6 foot. For these two pieces, since they're technically in the same area, we can immediately assume that the centroid that acts along the y between these two can be at the center here, then give us, this will be at 6 foot plus 2 feet, so then that will be, once again, 6. And then it'll be 2 foot plus 6 here, which is 8. And then here, it's going to be 1 foot because this is 2 feet high. So 1 foot plus 4 feet plus 6 feet, so 11 foot. And then since this is symmetric, it's still acting in the center. So then once we have each of these, then in this axis, we can do the sum of each of those areas times your y over the sum of your area, which will give you your y bar. does anybody have any questions so far as far as what I'm doing? Or are you guys already familiar with this process? Alright, since everyone's quiet, I'm going to assume everyone's familiar, but to quickly do this, it's just going to be the 6 feet times 12 foot. So that'll be the area of this first rectangle times your 3, your 3 feet that occurs here, which is your y for the centroid of that particular angle. The two area pieces that occur here, which is simply going to be 4 foot times 4 foot times 2, because there's 2 of them, times the 8 foot, which is what we calculated here. And then this area is going to be the 2 foot times 12, and then your y bar. And then the sum of all of those areas will occur below here, and that will be how you calculate your y bar wherever it occurs. Okay. So the next section property is going to be moment of inertia, which I have the definition right here that describes the relative difficulty of rotating an object based on mass or pivot point. And really it's talking about how stiff an object is. So if we were to take a beam, for instance, so let's say if I drew this in 3D, if that same beam was laid flat in 3D, then when you apply, let's say, the same load of like, I'm just using arbitrary 10 kips, then intuitively, we already know that when we apply this load in the center, that this beam is probably not going to deflect as much or fail as easily as the beam on the right-hand side. So, and that is because that there's more mass away from your centroidal axis, which results to a greater stiffness. And because, so then using that same idea, that is also the reason why I-beams tend to perform really well in bending, and that's because most of your mass for your I-beam occurs along here, which is whatever distance it is from the center axis. So some common formulas for moment of inertia is listed here. And once again, these formulas will be most likely provided on the exam when they ask those questions and you would directly plug and chug into the formula. Something that I forgot to go over is that moment of inertia is entirely dependent about whichever axis that your object would then be rotating. So for instance, IX would be about the x-axis, and IY would be about the y-axis. Any questions on moment of inertia so far?
Feel free to unmute and ask questions if anyone has any questions.
I think it's pretty easy, actually. It's just like you have to follow the formulas and the rules and it's easy to get it. So I don't have any problem in regards to the inertia part.
Awesome. Most likely, you guys will not have a parallel axis theorem or a polar moment of inertia question. But just in case if you do, the parallel axis theorem and the polar moment of inertia is something that is typically asked if the object is not rotating about its centroidal axis. So if your, if the axis is here and your object is here, you would use your d-distance to then calculate whatever that moment of inertia would be. Now, if the object was rotating about both axes, x and y, then that's when you would use your polar moment of inertia, which is this distance here. And that's denoted as P in most equations. And to simplify it further, instead of having to use the equations, you could simply add whatever your moment of inertia is about your x and your y axis. So these are the formulas for that where there'll be about your y and your x and then, or actually, I apologize. It should have, it would be this formula, but it would be this plus your area times d squared. I'll fix this slide before sending it out to you guys. Alright, so now that you guys know your moment of inertia, another cross-section or cross-sectional property that is more commonly used in designing beams is your section modulus. And there's two types of section moduli. One is your elastic section modulus and the other is plastic. And we'll go into this a little bit more when we talk about deformation and how different materials act when there's a load applied to it later in the slides. But the most common one that is used is typically your plastic section modulus. here's an example problem, which is pretty, I think, straightforward from, I think, one of the NCAR practice tests. And just like this, they will show you that, or provide your formula, and then you would simply plug and chug. Another thing that I forgot to note was that for section modulus, your units are always in the third power, whereas for your moment of inertia, it's always at the fourth power. And then if for homework problems, use the same shapes. And if you need some more practice for moment of inertia or section modulus, and then obviously before the next class or within the next few weeks, I will provide the solutions for these. Alright, so now that we know section properties, we're going to shift gears into stress and strain. And so there's several types of stresses and strains. Some of the stresses would be kind of like what we talked about earlier, which would be your axial force and then shear force and then your bending stress. And typically for stress, it's your force of resistance over your unit area. And I'll definitely go into this a bit more later, but it's like whatever is the maximum amount of stress or strain your member can handle before it deforms and fails.
Aisha, I have a question. Just to help us understand the concept behind all this you're explaining, what is the importance of knowing what the moment of inertia is and the cross-sectional, you know, like what you're explaining? Like, why is it important? You know, how do you apply that to, you know, real life problems? Is it easy to understand, I mean, to explain that way?
Yeah, and actually, we'll be going into those here in a moment of like where those properties apply when we go into the different types of stresses. So yes, I absolutely will do.
Okay, yeah, I think it'll help me to understand like why we, why moment inertia or finding out the centroid, you know, of the, of the shape. Like, why is it important to know how to do that, you know?
Yeah. Let's go through a few more slides and then we'll focus on like the area one. And then when we get to the bending moment one. And once we get through those slides, if that wasn't, or if that wasn't sufficient, then let me know and I will, I will definitely come up with another way to better explain it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, so the first type of stress that we had talked about was direct stress. And this is also, could be called normal stress or axial stress, etc. And that's usually for members where like, let's say if you had a bar, and this was like a member that was taken from one of the trusses that we worked on in one of the earlier classes. And so say that we had a load and this is the bar that is here. And so this truss member, if we, let's say we calculated it and one of the members was in compression, and let's say another member, which might not actually be the case for this, but for sake of conversation, is in tension, like shown. And typically, just like how we talked about before, compression is a negative value and the tension is a positive value. And so for that, because this is a uni-axial load, this load is going to be experienced by this object over the whole area. So that's why it's going to be this force over the area. And when you get problems on the exam itself, there's going to be three potential ways that they could ask the question, just like how it's shown here. The question could ask, what is the stress on the object? So then you would take your force and then divide it by your area. It could ask, what is the most force that the object can handle? Which would then be your stress value times your area. Or the question could also ask, what is the minimum area required for this bar to be able to resist a force? So here's an example that I took from, and even the notes in the previous slide, from one of the resources that was listed in NCAR for, called Simplified Engineering for Architects in Buildings. So then right here, it says, "Design", or I'll let you guys take a minute to read it. So basically, it's a square post, and there's a compressive load of 30,000 pounds that is acting on this post. And they provide a table in this book that has a couple of common values. And I think on the exam, they'll either provide what those values are, or they might provide several values and you'll have to pick what is the correct value to use. And then ask you either like what area is required, etc. So for this one, we know that there's a force applied of 30,000 pounds. And to be able to determine the size of this square post is to find what that compression value would be. So then you would use this compression value of 1,150 PFS. So that's why it's 30,000 pounds divided by pounds over square inches. And because this is over the square inches, then you would take that up and over with how fractions work. So then this is the minimum size, or Amin, that you would need for that polymer post. And there'll probably be tables provided, which I forgot to take a screenshot of that here, so I apologize. But you can then, there'll probably be a multiple choice question of like, would it be a 2 by 6? Which 1 and 1/2 times 5 and 1/2 obviously wouldn't be enough to meet this requirement. So then there might be another multiple choice question that has 5 and 1/2 by 5 and 1/2, which gives you this minimum area, which is greater than what is, or this area, which is greater than the minimum required. Any questions there? Great, so Another type of question that could get asked would be determine the face axial compressive load for a short square concrete pier. Oh, another side note, um, when it says short square, the key term here is short. And the reason why is that there is another failure mechanism, which we might not go over during this class, maybe a later class of buckling. So if there is, sometimes if there's a question of what is the face axial compressive load? And if it doesn't specify short, or if it doesn't say that compression is what governs, then you could have to check both for buckling and compression. Um, but we'll go over that later on in class.
Um, Aisha, I have a question. That last example with the five, six by six, um, do we have to take the actual dimension of a six by six? Or can we just use six by six as a general kinda estimate? Cause if you do five and a half by five and a half, you have less than 30 square inches, right?
Um, I think five and a half by five and a half should be more than 30, 5.5. Yep, so.
Okay, it is, I was, yeah, okay. Never mind, that answers my question.
What is, um, I forget the history behind it, but it's kind of dumb, in my opinion, that it's like, that when they sell the lumber at like Home Depot, they'll say it's like a two by six or a six by six. When in reality, it's either like a five and a half by five and a half, or like, I don't know, one and a three quarters. So that's definitely something to be careful about when designing for wood.
Yeah, anything above, let me see, anything over six inches, you get, I think it's a nominal, the actual length is three quarter of an inch shorter, and anything below six, six by, or six inches is less than half an inch.
Yep.
Yeah, but yeah, I don't know the history either, and I think I heard it from somewhere, but I forgot. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so, um, so the next example is so then, um, determine the face axial compressive load for a short square concrete pier with a side dimension of two feet, so they do give you one of the dimensions. And, oh, and because it's a square, that's how we know it would be two foot times two foot, so then our area would be two times two, which is four. Um, so now that we have the area, then for that compressive load, we would then have to go to our table, or if they provide some values. We would then take our concrete compressive strength of 3,000 PSI and multiply, or sorry, um, not this. Almost made a mistake there. So whatever is the useful amount in bearing. And I think that is simply some sort of safety factor, um, so we would have to use this value. So then it would be the 900 PSI times the area of your pier. And since this is given in PSI, we need to make sure that this gets converted to inches. Um, so then that would be 12 inches over a foot. And because it gets squared, so then it'd be to the power of two. So then that would be your safe load on the pier. So then for some homework problems, using those same tables, table 2.1, here's a few problems that you can, uh, like quickly do for more practice. Alright, so the next concept is strain. I think I didn't see very many practice problems in this, so I feel that this might not be a question on the exam. But because it was in the resource material, I think it would be good for us to go over. But, and, um, the guy, the efficient engineer who has YouTube videos, I'm a huge fan of his videos, he does, he has some great visuals and stuff. So I would highly recommend watching, um, in addition to this class, the videos on stress and strain and to get a better understanding. So um, to go over strain, say, for like, for instance, this example, if one end was fixed, and there was a force applied on the other end, there, your bar, or if this was made out of steel, would experience some tension and elongation. And this force could come from either an actual applied force, an internal force that could happen would be like, let's say if something warmed up or heated up significantly, then you could experience some thermal expansion in the bar. And if that is the case, then there would be some, there would be a provided formula for that thermal expansion. So then strain is obviously given, or denoted by epsilon, which is your change in length over your original length. Alright, so stress and strain have, um, a pretty, like, so this, so this chart here kinda shows the relationship that they have with the two. And kinda like what we were going over earlier about the plastic and, um, I think elastic section modulus. When, and we'll go more into the use and the design of that in a few later slides, is that say if you have that same bar, and it's experiencing an applied force, and we'll just say it's a tension force, then as the force increases, this yield strength is the maximum force that this bar or that material could experience, such that if that stress or if this force was removed, then that bar would then deform back into its original shape. And that's typically what engineers design for. Um, they also, or you also design for where there would be some like visual cracking, so like, a good example would, for that would be like for concrete and steel, they're the two materials that go very well together, where concrete is great in compression, and steel is great in tension. And concrete beams are designed such that, um, the concrete would show like visual cracks before failure. And it could still sustain whatever load for a certain period of time before there is a complete fracture. Is there? So does anybody have any questions on the stress strain curve?
No.
Nope. Alright, so the next, so using that concept, we're gonna apply it to shear stress and bending stresses. And so just like how we talked about before, when we have our loading on the beam, um, and let's say it's some sort of uniform load. Uh, this beam will experience some sort of bending. And from that bending, if we take a cut through the beam, then with a cut beam, we know that there's going to be bending that's occurring and some shear, direct shear that's occurring. And from bending, there is a portion of the beam that will be in compression, and a portion of the beam that will be in tension. There's a compression and tension, yes. Um, typically for a loading like this, the top half will be in compression and the bottom half. Smiley face. Um, where this top half is in compression and the bottom half is in tension. And somewhere along the middle of this, there would be no stress, and that point is your neutral axis. So this is where, um, the for a moment of inertia and your centroid comes into play for designing your beam. So similar to how, like, if we go back a couple of slides, there's different uses of the formulas. One is finding what could be your maximum stress, your maximum load, or your maximum cross-section. So coming back here, we could rearrange this formula to be able to calculate what is your maximum bending stress that it can experience. So it'd be your moment times C, uh, divided by I. Or you could try and calculate what your, um, max cross-section or moment of inertia would then be by rearranging the formula to I equals and C over your bending stress. Um, and just like how it's shown here, you could also calculate what your maximum moment can be. So your I over C is actually also an expression for like, for a section modulus. So S is equal to I over C. So these same formulas, your bending stress could then be M over S. Or you could solve for S, for what your S needs to be, um, by bringing, so bringing this C over here, and so your S is equal to M over whatever your bending capacity is for that section. And so I guess to come up with an example on the fly, say if you had, um, a certain amount of bending that was occurring that you solved from one of the previous examples that we've done, whatever your max bending ends up being. And say you needed to calculate what that cross-section needed to be. And so if you know that you have some sort of height limitation, so like, let's say if we have a building, and this is your, uh, this is your floor right here, right? And the structural engineer is, and so this would be like whatever your tile is at the top, and then your ceiling tile or ceiling below. And there's gonna be all this like ductwork and things that will be going through there. And there is, and you've told your structural engineer that, um, you're limited to only 12 inches of space, or 12 or 16 inches of space here. So then your structural engineer would then have to come up with a section for their joist. Um, and say if bending was what was governing the design based on what that span was for your building. So then, um, so like, for simplicity, we'll just have this be a rectangular joist that keeps going. We know that this here has to be 12 inches. So then if we, uh, plug in in here, whatever S needs to be for a rectangle, which I think is BH squared over six, if I'm remembering correctly. Yep. So for a rectangle here. If we plug in BH squared over six. So then we know that our height is limited to 12 inches. We get our moment from whatever that demand load is that occurs along the joist. And um, so then we would solve, and then we know that this is made out of wood, and wood has their, um, and Dougfer has their limitations for what that bending stress is. So then we can calculate what that minimum width needs to be. So I'll put together some practice problems for this, and different scenarios that are, real life scenarios of like, oh, if we needed to design a beam for a floor load or your roof load, what size does it need to be with given spacing? Um, I'll put those together and provide it when we send these notes out. Alright. So the last concept would then be shear and beams. Um, actually, did anybody have questions on the bending force or bending stress?
No, not here.
Okay. So then, um, so for the next one would be, so the next concept will be shear stress. Um, so there's two types of stresses, one is vertical shear and horizontal shear. So for vertical shear, it would go straight through where it would go straight through here. And then for your horizontal shear, um, that could be a failure mechanism more common in wood than in other, um, applications. For concrete, actually, if it was to be failing in shear, there'll be like shear cracks. And that might end up being a concept question for a specific material. And maybe later on, when we go into like the different material design, then we can go over the different types of failing mechanisms for each material type. So then, yeah, so for here, there would be your horizontal shear, and there is a set of equations for those. So for shear stress, it's very similar to your normal stress where it's force over area. And then your shear stress would be a provided value from a table. And then for horizontal stress, um, that is typically caused by bending, so that would be like, your Q is gonna be your, I think the term is like, is So that would be like, your Q is going to be your, I think the term is like, it's like a, I'm forgetting what the term is called right now, but it's a type of moment, which is then given by your area times your distance of where, or where your centroidal axis is. So then you can solve for it here. And then it would be your applied shear force, and then divided by your moment of inertia and the width of your section at that given point. So I think the key takeaway here is that when it comes to solving for shear on the exam, make sure that you know that what kind of shear it's asking for. So if the question came up, definitely clarify if it's vertical or horizontal shear, because of two different formulas, and they might trip you up by providing both. And then typically, the maximum shear for, especially for the distributed loads, or even a point load, you would just take your Bmax, and then it's this formula here that has already been derived for you guys. All right, so that is, oh, sorry. Actually, we'll go for buckling and deflection in a different class instead of today. So yeah, I think we're going to stop the class here. And does anybody have any questions on shear stress? Or bending stress, or axial stress, or normal stress? And did that answer the question of how those stresses can be used in real-life applications?
Aisha, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Thank you.
Was there a question on this slide?
Oh, I'm just taking pictures of each of your presentations, so it kind of helps me remember when I study. It's actually all new to me, so I'm still struggling following through. I know a lot of people here actually had structured classes, and so to them it's a review. To me, it's all new. It'll take me a while to understand your slides.
And we will be sharing these slides. Like after this, we will be sharing the slides.
Okay, that's even better, because honestly, I honestly prefer to have the slides as I can visit them when I need to remember what we talked about today. So that would be great, actually.
Yeah, and I did actually share the slides for the first sessions. But I'll send an email with all four, like the slides for all four sessions.
Perfect, perfect. Do you need our emails, or how do you guys?
Did you get my Google invite?
I think so. I don't remember, honestly, but I.
Like, how did you RSVP? Did you go to the website?
I went, I think I have an invitation through my email.
Okay, that, if you got an invitation, that means that was my invitation. Well, what's, what's your name? Let me actually just make sure I have.
My name is Yusuf, and my last name is Mal.
Okay. Yeah, if you didn't receive, Aisha, when? When do you think you can send me the slides?
I can send it to you right now.
Oh, okay, okay. Then if anyone didn't receive, because I'll, what I will do, I'll put all the four slides, and I'll send it in one email. If anyone didn't receive my email with the slides, let's say by this weekend, Max, just email me, and I'm putting my email in the, in the group chat. Just send email there and say that, hey, I did not receive the slides. So I can make sure to send you the slide.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep, yep.
Aisha, you mentioned that you were going to fix one of the slides. Will that be included in your, in the slide that you're going to send to Mohammed right now?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And if it's, yeah, I'll put in, I have a note to myself, and say if there's an off chance that I didn't fix it, then totally let Mohammed know, and I will fix it right away. But I will make sure to fix it before sending it to him.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Aisha, for an excellent presentation. Well, not one, but for four excellent presentations. You almost covered all the main structural topics for the ARE exam. So thank you so much, really, for all the time you have invested in the preparation for these sessions. I know how much time and effort it takes. I used to prepare these sessions by myself, and it, it really takes a lot of time to put like a slide deck together and to prepare for a presentation. So I really want to thank you so much for all your effort for like four excellent presentations. Thank you so much for that.
Yes, thank you so much. I just really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Aisha.
And thank you all for attending. Thank you all for, just make sure you keep studying. If anyone needs anything, send me an email. I just sent my email address. I really wish you all the best in the exams. I think, like, this whole working from home actually gives more time, your commute time, your time you used to spend. Now at least you can hopefully concentrate more on your studies, and you can take the exam from home. So I think it's a really good time to study and to just, you know, just get your license. Yeah, yeah, so.
And on that same, on that same note, thank you, thank you so much, everyone, for having me come and present. I haven't presented in years, so doing these four presentations, it's a, it's been a great way to, one, learn how to present in this new world that we're in, and then, two, it's helping me. And whatever I can do to help you guys, you have my email. And if there's study sessions or one-off questions, whatever I can do to support you guys, so let me know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, then I think we can end for today, unless anyone has any last thoughts, questions, comments. Okay, I don't hear anything. Thank you all. Thank you for attending. And we'll, I'll send that email hopefully within like the next couple days.
All right, Paul, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, you too. Okay, have a good night, everyone. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Bye, bye.